I, you know, I don't know.
We could call the meeting of Lucas and the council's order. We could stand and pledge and then move it silent. My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonder if, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll?
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Sazini. Alderman Fruin. Alderman Lauer. Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Sterns.
Here.
Alderman McDade.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Wonder if I could start with a recognition that we have Reverend Dale and Tammy Miller here, and they perform at the, excuse me, they have a, an event every year at the Harvest Family Worship Center thanking our public officials, and many of us were in attendance several weeks ago when we thank you so much, and they're here this evening. If you were, did not have a chance to attend, perhaps you can attend next year. It was an incredible service. Thank you, both of you, for attending. Thanks. We can start off with our recognition. If we could call Rich Sterling forward and some of the students who participated in our Japanese Sister City Foreign Exchange Program. Thank you. Please come forward.
Thank you very much. As you know, we are funded by the city of Bloomington and the town of Normal, and we've got three outstanding students here today. We've got Anna Saguchi. Anna is going to be our exchange student over to Asahikawa next year. And then we've got our two students that have been here for a year from Asahikawa, Masaki Okta and Sayuki Oka. And they would like to say a few words to thank the city council. These students have worked very hard all semester long, or I'm sorry, all year long, and both of them have Bs in American history. So, I'm pretty proud of that. So, they've got a few words.
Hey, my name is Masaki. I was going to Bloomington High School until last week, and school is just finished last week, and I can just relax and play outside. So, anyway, first of all, thank you for giving me a chance to say thank you for my experiences in Bloomington. I have had so many experiences during this year in the U.S. When I came here first time, I couldn't understand English, so I was so nervous. But everyone who I've met since staying here are very kind and talk to me so much, even if they don't know about me. My nervousness was going away soon then. Also, my English was improved by conversations with teachers, friends, and my host family. I really appreciate to all of them. In winter, I participated in barbershop classes. A man who is related with Sister City Committee is in the group, and he invited me to be in. They are really nice and also really big group. But I guess I have talked to almost everyone in the group. They are that much of friendly and funny. We had practice every Tuesday, so I was always looking forward that day. I really enjoyed. I participate two of their concerts, which are Christmas concert and barbershop annual show in February. That's my first experience to sing in front of many people. That was so exciting. I still have many experiences what I want to share, but I don't have much time. Finally, my life in the U.S. is almost over. To be honest, I don't want to go back. Now, I feel like I'm one of the citizens of the U.S., citizen of Bloomington. I will visit here someday in the future as soon as possible. I will be looking forward of it. I usually, sorry, I would say again to thank you for having me in Bloomington. Thank you for everything what have helped my study abroad. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sayuki. I'm proud that, thank you. I'm proud that I could be a member of the exchange students in an exchange between Bloomington Normal and Asahikawa for a long time. Since I came here, I heard that Bloomington is a college town. I looked forward to it. I wanted to study chemistry and math, which is my theme, but I couldn't do much because the shortage of my English. But I could take some regular classes. I was so glad for that. And then I understood the U.S. history, the U.S. politics, and a mechanism of the U.S. economy, which I can't study in Japan. I prepared in biology and algebra. I also reviewed them. My host families are educationally aware. They taught me subjects and they gave me advices. When I joined many parties, I talked with guests about topics which I didn't know. I enjoyed it. I will never forget that Bloomington Normal students talked to a seventy-year-old girl, and they gave me advices. I will come back to become a scientist. I'd like to thank Bloomington Normal students for giving me a dream which became an American, and I will repay their favor kindness. I love Bloomington Normal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Onna Sekiguchi, and I would like to thank you for supporting the opportunity that is allowing me to be your ambassador to Asahikawa, Japan. I am proud to be a representative of Bloomington Normal and Asahikawa, especially because I've lived here all my life, and I'm proud to, proud to have lived in Bloomington Normal for so long. I will represent Bloomington Normal by being outgoing and making friends and attending functions there. I will share what it's like to live here by showing PowerPoint presentations with pictures and info I've gathered about Bloomington Normal. And I will also have a scrapbook that I've been making, and I've been taking pictures of my school, well, Normal Community West, and just like soccer practice and all that jazz. So, I will keep taking pictures of our progressing town. And thank you again for supporting this program so I can be, so I can take part once again in a life, once-in-a-lifetime experience, making contributions to the relationship between Asahikawa and our twin cities.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Certainly, the Sister Cities Program with all of our three sister cities throughout the globe is really, really an important part of it, especially since we're becoming an increasingly interdependent global economy. Thank you all, and thank you, Rich. Thanks. We move right along. If I could recognize our Parks and Rec Director, John Kenny, one step forward. We have some good news from the Miller Park Zoological Society. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of our more celebratory times of the year each year that we're very thankful. I'd like to bring up Tracy Zeller, President of the Miller Park Zoological Society. Also like to recognize their Development Coordinator, Susie Olly's in the crowd with the camera there, and another board member, Judy Galloway, from the Miller Park Zoological Society. We're very thankful with the great relationship that we have with our society. They like to do, they like to have their dollars, show their support more so than their words. So, I don't think Tracy has a real long speech, five or 10 minutes, I think. But extremely thankful for the working relationship that we have, that they've helped us achieve a lot of goals, and we're looking forward to achieving more as we implement our master plan. So, at this point, I'll ask Tracy if she wants to say anything, but I think she's got a check. She's just wanting to hand over to us.
We're very pleased to present this money to the city and to the zoo that we love.
Wow, $115,000.
For $115,000 from the Miller Park Zoological Society.
I wonder, actually, if you could stay up for just one moment. Could I have a motion to express appreciation to the Miller Park Zoological Society for their work and contribution?
I will definitely make that motion.
Motion by Alderwoman Schmidt, second.
Second.
Second by Alderwoman McDade. Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, and thank you for your support of our great zoo. Thank you. We've got a couple of public, excuse me, proclamations. I just want to give public notification of them. One is going to be a proclamation in recognition of the League of Women Voters' 100th anniversary of the 1913 Illinois law granting women the right to vote for President of the United States and for municipal officers. And so, that's certainly a historic day. A hundred years ago, that was seven years before the passage of the 19th Amendment that gave women the right to vote throughout the United States. So, we were on the cutting edge in those days. The other is a proclamation for the contributions of Dr. Al Bowman. It's proclamation of Dr. Al Bowman Day, and so that will be July 26, 2013. So, those are just, again, public notifications of proclamations that are forthcoming. We move next to item 5D, the Boards, Commissions, Committee Appointments, Reappointments. All of the people to the Beautification Committee, Airport Authority, Conventures, Vittus of Bureau Board, Human Relations Commission, and the Japanese Sister City have been invited, appointees or reappointees, to attend this evening, so there may be questions. Are there, do the members of the council have any questions or would like any of the particular board and appointee, appointees or reappointees to step forward? Alderman Fruin. Okay, those of you here in attendance, could you please stand if you're being appointed or reappointed to one of the Boards and Commissions? I know some of you are out there. Only one? Wow, wow. Well, you're outstanding in so many different ways. I've said this in so many ways. Erin, thank you very much. Great. Anyway, okay, moving on then to the consent agenda. The city manager has asked that we pull item 6C. Are there any other items that we need to pull from the consent agenda? Alderman, Alderman, excuse me, Millamway, excuse me. 6I, all right? Okay, okay. Madam Clerk, do we need to, can that just be noted, or do we need to vote on it separately if he pulls it?
If he pulls it, you have to vote on it separately.
Okay. 6I. Okay, anything else? All right, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended that is excluding 6C and 6I? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, tie second by Alderwoman McDade, since, okay, there's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fruin.
And regular agenda, I do not have any personal or business interest in any of the listed items, nor have I received any financial benefits from any of the parties or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items, and I vote yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Okay, we move to the regular agenda, and the first item of business is item 6I, suspension of Chapter 6 to allow possession of open alcohol on public property for the WGLT event June 8, 2013. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Motion by Alderwoman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Sage. Any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, signal, oh, excuse me, we have to do a roll call on this. Sorry.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fruin. Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Yes.
Motion carried. And we move on to the next item, item 7A, Agreement with West Side Churches for Youth Programming. And just to make a little bit of comments here, this is something that has come about over about the past six weeks of discussions between ministers from the west side of Bloomington and some of our police officers, several of our aldermen. And it is presented as a pilot program. And of course, a pilot program means that our goal is obviously to help people, but it is also to learn something about implementation. And so, we would certainly want to, in many different ways, we'd learn about selection of people who would be included in the program. And of course, as a pilot, you'd tweak that. You would learn about the particular techniques and operation of the program. And a pilot program also means that the metrics for evaluation would be both qualitative, frankly, in some cases, story-based, as well as, you know, statistics. So, that's the big picture in terms of a pilot program. We do know that there may be interest on some of perhaps the judges for, in the long term, perhaps, giving people the option to participate in a program such as this as an alternative to jail. But you have to have a program in place, and at this point, we really don't even have the pilot. And so, again, a pilot would mean it is experimental, you are learning, and you use that knowledge not just to help people, but then presumably to build on that, and then maybe the next time you have a better program, and it can begin to grow. So, that's the big picture of what's in front of us. I think in order for us to be clean in how we move forward, we probably need to have a motion to suspend the rules, to allow a couple of the pastors who've been involved in this to come forward and speak on this issue. I would be happy to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow that. And I would say we're talking about approximately maybe five minutes, just to give a timetable to this.
I'm happy to make that motion, Mayor.
Motion by Alderwoman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman McDade. Okay, we, this will require a roll call, and we would need a two-thirds vote. So, of the eight aldermen and women present, we would need at least six to support a suspension of rules to allow public participation here. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Alderman Fruin.
Yes.
Alderman Lauer.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Millamway.
Yes.
Alderman Sterns.
Aye.
Alderman McDade.
Thank you. And could we have Pastor Rayford and McSwain come forward? And anyone else who might want to as part of the group? Because I see many of you who were involved in this over the last couple of months come forth.
Mayor Renner.
Oh, yes, yeah. Yes, come on forward. Those of you who've been involved, come forth. Thank you. Reverend McSwain?
To the council, we are here to encourage you to support our efforts in...
Sorry to get just your microphone, Pastor. Thank you slightly. Thank you.
To ask your assistance and encouragement in our work with regards to the needs of our youth between June and August, this month, these months while they're out of school. There's quite a bit of concern with regards to our children and the need for them to have a different view within our city as it relates to the concerns that we're faced with. We all know that during the summer months, our young people have quite a bit to get into. There's so much that they can get into. Bloomington Normal has grown leaps and bounds, and a number of our children and young people are very active now. They're active in sports, they're active in academics, they're active in so many other programs as well. But there is a community of young people that we want to make sure we don't lose, because all our children are important to us. And it doesn't matter where they live, it doesn't matter what their issues are, they're our children. And I feel it's important for us to really recognize that and understand the need for us to come together as a community and really do all we can to preserve them and give them an opportunity to do something different than they had been doing. We want to do all we can to minimize crime and to continue to build families, parent and youth involvement and development, as well as create an opportunity for our children to not just play and have a good time, but to grow and to be nurtured and to be trained and to be prepared to take on the future endeavors of our city, Bloomington Normal. I believe it's important for us to acknowledge that and to understand the need that there are some young people that will be faced with a lot of challenges and difficulties. What we want to do is allow them an opportunity, an alternative, if you may, to do something different, to give them a safe place, a safe haven to play and to grow and to nurture, and as well as work with the parents to bring unity and to allow them to continue to develop as a family. So, I don't want to take up all the time. I know there's quite a number of other people who want to speak, but that's the gist of it, and I believe it's going to take the Bloomington Normal to come together and invest in this. This is an investment. Of course, this is a pilot. Of course, we're looking to do something and to continue this effort, to develop it, to make it pleasing to all and to allow everyone the opportunity to take advantage of it, and particularly our young people.
Thank you, Pastor. Thanks. Pastor McRever?
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity. In the next 10 to 12 weeks, we're going to have approximately 100, given the last three year, reign, 100 youth to offend or reoffend. And if we're not real careful, that number's going to spike simply because it's the summertime. Whether the kids that would participate in this program are mandated or they volunteer, we need to do something proactively to stem this tide of crime. I say that because many of our children, we're going to spend at least $250 per day to take care of the kids who are going to offend. We're going to spend that money. If history has a sound voice, we're going to do that. We're asking that rather than spend that money, invest it proactively in helping to stem the tide of generational crime, generational. With this pilot program, we're going to be able to not just take care of 15, 30 kids, 30 kids, but their families also, meaning that we can put them on a communication course where the kids are turned towards right, but also their families are made whole. There is a plethora of very able, willing minds that want to stand behind this program, companies to help make this a success. The churches are coming together. And I would say this in conclusion, seldom is the opportunity for the state and the church to so well work together. Seldom is the opportunity for grace and law to stand shoulder to shoulder and make a good thing happen. I would ask that you come see one of our basketball games that we're going to have happen, Ms. Judy, where the police officers and the pastors are going to put on basketball uniforms, and we're going to take on these kids in an environment where it's going to be fun. But what will have happened? The street cred that I don't have outside on the street, the street cred that the police don't have inside the church can be shared, where we can stand together side by side trying to do something positive for our youth, as opposed to the police officers locking them up, and by the time they finish the paperwork, the trial is already gone, back out on the street again. Let's turn that around with a minor, a small investment. We can make this pilot, not just a brief thing, but probably a lifestyle in Bloomington Normal where we can turn the situation around.
Thank you. Drew, did you want to go ahead? And if at this point, could you, Drew, state your name and I guess address so that we have a record? We do know Pastor Rayford and McSwain, but make sure that everybody knows who you're...
I'm Pastor Andrew Held, and I'm at 914 and a half, West Washington. I'm the youth pastor for Jesus House, and I've spent the last two and a half years with a lot of the youth on the west side, and I have patched up bullet wounds, and I've tended to drug overdoses. And the kids of this community need every ounce of help that we can give them, and this is just another great opportunity that we can offer for our kids of our youth instead of just locking them up. And it's a great opportunity to work with our police officers, with our city, with our trade skills men to teach the kids skilled trades, give them something positive to do during the summertime. For when it's summertime, there's hundreds, hundreds of kids, and there's just not enough programs. summertime, there's hundreds, hundreds of kids. And there's just not enough programs, there's not enough role models out there coming to battle this front. So this would be another great opportunity for our kids to help stop the violence, and to help collectively, to help the families and gathering with the kids and the families, and reinstituting just a good family home life. And hopefully, to teach these kids about God. As a pastor, I got to promote Jesus and God. So hopefully, it's a good opportunity to promote God for these kids, and just a higher morale standard, and to give them something positive this summer.
Miles. Hello. My name is Miles Spann, and address is 104 West Locust, I mean, yeah, West Locust apartment two. I'm coming forward today just to be very brief and say that I'm not just an advocate for this program, but I am a testament, I'm a living testament of programs like these successfully working. I'm originally born in Detroit, Michigan, inner-city, Midwest side, crime rate astounding. I've rubbed elbows with everybody from drug dealers to gang bangers, and programs like these saved my life. I am born, I'm child of a, to be honest, a crack addict. My dad was nowhere to be found, and I was raised by my grandmother by herself, her $500 a month. What she was able to do, she couldn't do it all by herself, so she had to put me in someplace where I could be involved, where I could have a chance to connect with men my age and older, to actually do something positive with my time. So she connected me, she put me in summer programs all the time, where I had a chance to utilize my natural intellect and my skills to learn how to draw, to write, to speak, to do so many different things. And all I can say is that programs like these gave me an opportunity and an option not to be on the streets, for people to actually look at me and say, hey, you are better than what, you are better than what people say you are. So not to hold up any longer, I'm just saying, please, give this program a chance.
Angelique?
Angelique Rackey, 322 East Mulberry, Bloomington. My name's Angelique. I own BCAI School of Arts in Bloomington. It stands for Breaking Chains and Advancing Increase. I am very, very much a fan of quality instead of quantity, meaning with my business, I don't go for the wallet, I go for the individual. I believe in the individual and the spirit behind and inside every individual. When, just like Miles, I didn't grow up the best. I had the good family home, but I strayed. My parents sent me away to a boarding school that had a very strict structure, almost worse than a prison. And it allowed me to be able to see what I'm capable of. A lot of the kids don't get a chance to see what they're capable of. Some of the kids that come into my door have such low self-esteem that I have to cut off certain ways of their dancing, so that they're not trying to get attention. And I know you know what kind of dancing I'm talking about, I'm not going to show you, because it's kind of inappropriate right here. But what I've learned is that when you increase an individual's self-importance, what decreases is the level of rebel, rebelling, rebellion. Okay? So what I've witnessed and what I've noticed in myself, as soon as I realized who I was, my purpose, what I'm here to do, my skills, what makes me the woman of God that I am, what I'm here to do, the only reason I'm alive at this point in time, then my desire to rebel became almost non-existent. Now I'm here for a reason, I'm here for that. If these kids don't have somebody telling them that they're better, that they're great, that they have an individual, unique reason for being here, they're going to continue to think that they have to have their approval, and their approval, and their approval. And then there's also the perfection, perfectionistic mindset. So we really need to spend time on these kids' mindsets, and give them a safe place, a safe place to be able to speak, to be able to be themselves, to grow in themselves. And that's about it. I mean, it's the same scripture that I go off of for my other company, it's a nonprofit partner company called True Alliance. And the scripture comes out of Genesis, from the story of Babel, the Tower of Babel, where God specifically says, "When all these people can come together with a like mind, nothing is impossible to them." So, thank you.
Thank you. Police Chief Archie Finney, would you come forward, and you talk a little bit toward the end, the last week and a half or so, been a little bit involved in this?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't top this. You know, the things that they're saying are absolutely true. What I can tell you is that part of the Bloomington Police Department problem-oriented policing requires that we take a look at crime, and we try to do what we consider to be kind of predictive policing, is what areas have the patterns of issues that we need to address, you know, what are some of the core problems with those issues, and some of the frequencies and calls for service. In 2012, we had nearly 7,000 calls for service addressing juveniles. And those were the whole gamut, you know, from curfew to armed robbery, I mean, and everything in between. Over 300 arrests for 2012, just for the juvenile aspect, the age group that they're talking about. I can't tell you how to spend your money, and I wouldn't stand up here and pretend to even try to judge a pilot program such as this. But what I can tell you is this, that $21,000 versus $85,000 a year for juvenile detention per child, $21,000, that's $700 a kid, even if you looked at this program and said, I don't know, maybe 50% of it would work, that's 15 kids. I can tell you that the impact, the financial impact of that would be substantial to keep these kids out of detention. What I can tell you, in terms of the problem-oriented policing, that unaddressed, the juvenile issue unaddressed, we know where these kids are going to go. We know what's going to happen to them. Will this answer that question? I don't know. I guess, again, it's a pilot program, and it's yet to be seen. But, you know, in terms of being able to do anything for everybody, you know, if we can't do something for everybody or everyone, we should do something for someone. And again, I see the kids that they have the potential of picking out the 30 kids, that being off the street in these high-profile hours is being very productive for not only the city of Bloomington, but the police department, and certainly their neighborhood.
Questions. Alderman Sage? Just a quick question, Chief. And I appreciate you talking a little bit about the economics of this. My understanding is, and perhaps you can comment on it, is that we have some officers, our officers, that work directly with the youth in the community. There's a real measure of enthusiasm about this pilot program as well. Is that correct? I mean, that's my understanding.
Oh, I don't think any of the officers would object to a program that, again, takes the kids off-street, that they don't have to deal with on a daily basis or nightly basis, and, you know, seeing what's happening, and seeing them grow into adults, and, you know, address those crime problems as well. So, yeah, I think there is some enthusiasm that, you know, we would be involved in some of the programming.
I just think that's worth noting, that we have the passion and a commitment and an interest by the folks who are on the street, you know, our sworn officers on the street, in wanting the pilot program to be successful. So I appreciate your comment on that, Chief.
And I should mention, I mean, a lot of, some of the officers that are working in these programs are from the neighborhood. I mean, they have lived in the neighborhood, they grew up in the neighborhood, and they're also equally excited about seeing this go through.
Questions of Police Chief. Alderman Stern?
What is the formalized program through one of the court systems for juveniles? We are all familiar with Drug Court, for offenses having to do with drugs.
Right.
And I think that's a very formalized system that seems to be working very well. I know it's, much of it is privately funded, if not all of it. Terry, you're probably familiar with this, Mayor, as far as the county goes. Is that privately funded?
It actually came through a federal grant.
Okay, okay.
And actually Judge Robb and I, when I was Chair of the Justice Committee, and Sheriff Emery, were all involved in the Drug Court.
So federal grant originally, and there's a lot of public, I know there's a lot of private support.
And there's private support now. I went to the dinner, lunch, a few weeks, oh, that's right, we were there. I know that it's diversified. And that's actually, I think, part of what the thought was in Drug Court, is that there was going to be government seed money, and when it took off, then the private sector presumably would begin to step up to the plate.
Is there, are there any formalized programs through the courts right now for juveniles or?
Well, certainly, there's a number of programs that the courts will sentence the delinquent person to. Specifically, I can't tell you the agencies that are involved, I'm not as familiar with McLean County as I am, obviously, with Champaign County. But the courts do find the family service organizations and things to do, the counseling and that sort of thing. But it's paid for, typically, from the state, and state funds, county funds. As Mayor talked as well, there's a lot of Department of Justice, juvenile justice funds that come as an umbrella into a community through the federal agencies as well, that have to be expended.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Oh. I would, I guess since we've suspended the rules, yes.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. My name is Nick Sanchez, and I was contacted just about three weeks ago by the pastors behind me, and along with a couple of the people from the West Side, to sit down and talk with them about a couple ideas about exactly how this would work. So I just thought I would be available to the council to see if there's any questions about the nuts and bolts of the actual program, and that way I would be available to kind of answer anything in detail that you'd kind of like to know about the 12-week program, and overall. So I just thought I would give that offer to you as well.
I'm sure there are questions.
Sure.
Alderman Sage? I would just ask, and this is a question I generally ask for any community group that comes to the council requesting financial support. So can you, the request is for about $21,000 from the city of Bloomington. Sure. So can you provide some line of sight for how that money will be used? And then, I know, for instance, when we have other groups who come to the city to request funds, we have an understanding of kind of the check and the balance of how the money is appropriated, spent, accounted for, that type of thing. So could you just give us, again, kind of that line of sight for how the, not the entire gifts, because we're talking about substantially more private sector contributions here than we are public sector from within the city, but for the part that's the cities?
The overall 12-week program is going to run probably around $60,000 on the high end. When you take a look at the overall cost, the majority of that is being eaten by the churches, and most of all, the people that are going to be associated behind it. So all those in-kind donations, the liability insurance, the van fuel, the van insurance, some of the resources that we're going to be using within the facility, things like that, all of that's being brought in from the actual churches to cut that price down, or cut that cost down. The overall $21,000 is going to heavily help staff the four adults that are going to be running the actual program. So we'll have three actual activity instructors that are going to be with the staff, along with one coordinator overlooking the actual program. The checks and balances of the actual program will be run through a fiscal agent. Family Community Resource Center has offered to be the fiscal agent, so we will be following all of their fiscal policies, HR policies, organizational policies, hiring policies, and whatnot, to maintain that standard within them as they are employees. Since speaking with Family Community Resource Center, I've had two other offers from two other organizations that would also like to be considered as a fiscal agent as well. So if something does not work out with Family Community Resource Center, we can also reach out to a couple other nonprofits in town as well. Is that sufficient, or would you like more?
Yeah, maybe. Let me direct a question, and maybe to City Manager Hale. So I know, David, for instance, when we have expenditures that go out as a result of the community development block grants, those come back, and I think maybe Sharon, or Mark, or someone that kind of approves, has some accountability for how those funds are spent. Will there be a city staff person as well, who will be, have some measure of oversight over the $21,000 funds? Or do we know yet?
Actually, it's still a work in progress, but we are, you know, in talking with the mayor today, I'm recommending that as part of the motion, that you authorize the city manager to work up some sort of letter of agreement, so that we could put in there some of the basic terms and conditions that are typical for some of these year-to-year contracts you maybe see in the CDBG. But because the timeframe is so short, we will come up with something and identify who that contact person with the city will be, you know, how the money would be dispersed, you know, et cetera. But we just haven't had the time to kind of work all that into a letter of agreement.
So what I hear you saying is, we don't necessarily have the how figured out, but the what is, there will be a touch point, a checkpoint with some city staff?
Person. Yes.
Okay. As I understand with our discussion, we could have a motion to, in a sense, delegate the authority to the city manager to work out the payment schedule and the accounting that's consistent with our other agreements. Anyone, Alderman Sterns, excuse me?
I'm sorry.
I don't know if you had a chance, and I don't know who the appropriate person is, because I had about 15 or 20 questions, and most of them say Mayor Renner and Alderman Schmidt. So I don't know really what that means. You know, it says, a lot of my questions just say, for instance, I asked about the educational qualifications, the actual certification that the director will hold. I'm looking for the professional, you know, licensing and that kind of thing that the director and the employees will hold. Actually, I had a whole list of questions, so maybe you're the proper person. I don't know.
Sure, I'll answer them to the best of my.
Actually, I'm not looking for background, I'm looking for certification, education, what they're certified in, and what their, you know, what their qualifications are.
Sure. And I think the one thing that I would make clear for this program is, after speaking with Stephanie Behrish in town here, who I actually reach out to on a regular basis, anytime I have any type of mental health questions about youth that I'm working with in town here, you know, I talked to her, and I said, Stephanie, how many therapists do you think I would need for a program like this? You know, how many licensed clinical social workers, or things like that? And to my surprise, she said, you know, I don't know what the type of clientele that you're going to be working with, that they're going to want to be doing a one-on-one with somebody like that. You may want one overall seeing it, and that's where her office comes in, and they're able to help. But she says, you really looking for somebody that has street credibility. You're looking for people that is well-respected on the street, and that these weapons offenders, theft retail offenders, whoever they may be, whatever they're doing, sits and looks at the person across from them, and doesn't think that they're being judged, isn't sitting across from somebody that is sparkly clean, is actually sitting across from somebody that's been through something similar, either in their backgrounds or their lives, or has had some type of hiccup in their life, and have come through it, and have been a more productive citizen, if you will, in the community. And I kind of took a step back, and I thought about that, and I said, you know what, that makes great sense. So that kind of shook me a little bit, because I was thinking, having to have licensed social workers and things like that, but having the strength of a lot of these organizations around me and supporting me, like Stephanie's organization, I think will help me fill those credible spots with the right people on a case-by-case basis when I need them. So considering the question, again, I'm going to be looking for college-educated, child development, if not BA-finished, young adults, adults with some type of background of working with inner-city children. It would really be the major focus I would be looking for.
So as far as any particular certifications, not street cred?
Street cred, college education, and, you know, really, I think somebody with a really strong knowledge and background of inner-city children, in the way they work.
Okay. A question about the fiscal agent. I'm not familiar with that, Family Community Resource Center. I'm not familiar with that one.
Sure.
But I'm curious if you, or for that matter, I'm curious if the city thought about soliciting bids, you know, thought about actually putting out a request for proposals and getting?
That, is that, given that this was sort of organic and came from the groups, I don't think that it, as a pilot program, a community group offering, it didn't seem at all relevant or appropriate to do bids. Now, if we have a pilot program, and if we were to consider doing something in the future...
Now, if- if we have a pilot program and if we were to consider doing something in the future, then it might be more appropriate.
Well, my- my question, if I could, Mayor Renner, thank you. My question really, you mentioned that you have other, uh, fiscal agents that have stepped up. Um, and my question simply relates to one issue and one issue only, and that is that we are spending taxpayer funds. In other words, we're- we're not being asked for community development, like block grant funds, which I thought when I first heard about this program, we're actually being asked to take money out of the general fund, contingency fund, whatever, of the city of Bloomington. Which, you know, I mean, doesn't- doesn't say anything about the program. It just says that I feel accountable to the taxpayer. And I feel accountable to the taxpayer of the city of Bloomington to make sure that these funds are spent as wisely as possible, taking nothing at all away, of course, from anyone involved. But simply, how will we prove that to the citizens of Bloomington? And that's why I'm asking about bids. And I'm wondering, too, if this is a need, and, you know, this has been identified as a need, and I certainly wouldn't question that, whether the city looked at all of the possible agencies, whether we had a public meeting to talk to all of the public service agencies who might take an interest in this and in fact, might be able to provide this kind of programming, and whether, as I think is proper with public funds, we solicited bids to make absolutely sure that everyone, everyone in the city had an opportunity to participate in this program. And having said that, here's my next question, and that is about criteria. Are we going to have applications? What I've heard is that children will be referred. They'll be- maybe they'll- maybe they'll come forward, maybe their parents will come forward. But what I'm asking is, what about children from all the other sections of town? You know, the- the last murder, I think we had nothing to do with any of this. I believe it was on the east side. I think we've had a couple of incidents on the east side. What about all of the other, you know, how many hundreds of churches do we have in the city have been invited to a public meeting to come in and help, you know, address this issue or address the issue with other- other faiths? Maybe those who, you know, don't particularly-
Yeah, I think you're exactly right, and I think if you had the, um, the privilege of having more time on your hand, absolutely, you'd wanna put together and gather more input and things like that. But with some are knocking on the door and already a focus group in place of- of officers and people from the community knowing where a lot of this trouble is going to begin, um, I have to applaud all the people that came to that table the first meeting. I- I arrived at, they already had this planned. They had this thing ready to go. They have this thing focused and- and- and really ready to work for the community, and as quickly as- as everyone put it together, um, you know, I- people are telling me, "Wow, I've never seen government move this fast before in all the years I've worked here. That's great."
It's probably because it wasn't really government.
Well, it is- it is government, I think, and it certainly is government, because it's $21,000 of just plain old taxpayer funds.
And that- and that $21,000 is gonna come in and be, again, a pilot program. And if we knock this out of the park, who says we can't put one on the east side? Who says we can't put one in Lexington? Who says we can't put one somewhere else? But we need something to go off of and show the rest of the people in the council and the rest of the taxpayers that said, "Look, we took $21,000 and helped 30-plus kids over these three months."
But how will- how will we decide which kids we can't take in- in that 30? How will we- what will be the-
The criteria that we're gonna take the kids on is, we've initially started to go with the courts and with the police department and trying to see if we would get referrals straight from them, from kids that were reoffending. Absolutely not. It's against the law. They cannot do that. We respect that 100%. One of the officers that was at the meeting said, "I would love to have literature on this. I would love to have this information ready. So when I do pick somebody up and bring them home, do what I gotta do with them." And I handed to him and said, "Listen, this is where I want your kid to go. Look into this. This is a free program for kids that are, uh, just like yours, um, doing something on the streets, so on and so forth." Um, I- having spoken with, uh, McLean County Court Juvenile System, um, they just said the same thing. They would have that available ready there. Um, having spoken with, uh, very many different organizations across town from Project Oz to the Wise, um, Boys and Girls Clubs, Elmo Wesleyan, you name it, the Parks and Recs, um, they would all be aware of this program as well. And when they would have serious issues with a kid in their compet- in their environment, that that child, instead of just being home suspended or thrown out of the program, would be referred to our program. And then that child would then come into our program and work with us to see if they can work back into one of the other programs they've been thrown out of. So we were taking kids from a lot of different places, but the one thing we did not wanna do was just open this up at a church, at a church sermon or- or a Sunday, uh, afternoon, because as soon as someone hears that Mount Mariah and Mount Pescar are behind a free summer camp, we're gonna have a waiting list of 100 kids, 'cause everybody wants to get behind what these two gentlemen really wanna do for the community. And, um, we- I would like to specifically stay with the kids who need us most. The kids that are constantly getting in trouble, the kids that are not having that focus, and the kids that do not fit, be honest with you, the traditional summer programs across this town.
Nick, if I could just clarify, 'cause we also have other Aldermen who- who would like to speak, but, uh, or ask questions. So essentially, I think it's pretty safe to say in discussions with the chief and then the police officers who are participating, they can get the families to- the- the parents, they can talk to the families to get them to refer, but you can't do it through the kids. So that, and again, that's the other thing, with- with any kind of pilot program, that's one thing you're working out, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
If I could just, uh-
Could I just finish?
Oh, sure.
Since this is my question, and I really do appreciate, Nick, your responses. And, you know, it would just break my heart if that- if that kid couldn't get in because you were full. Or if somehow he didn't meet, you know, he- he hadn't been in trouble, you know, it would just break my heart to think of any child. Atheist, Buddhist, you know, Indian, I- I- I can't even fathom the- the, uh, ethnic groups and so on across this city, east, west, you know, north, south, whatever. It would break my heart if a child could not be admitted to this program, and I think it is critically important that strict criteria be set and be in- be in place. The city right now has a lawsuit pending for failing to establish arbitrary and certain, not arbitrary, I'm sorry, certain criteria for another, whole nother issue. It has nothing to do with this. But it would break my heart if a child could not be accepted or had to be rejected from this program, because frankly, you're full and you're going to have, um, you're going to have limits. And that's- that's understood, but I think it's critically important to know exactly what those limits are going in. So no one could be turned down for some kind of an arbitrary reason. And I'm gonna finish, because I realize I've extended, overextended my time, and I do apologize, Mayor Renner. But my other questions I had were regarding, as far as the funding, and I'm gonna, I'm not even gonna ask you to answer them, but I will tell you that I do have a question about, something about $3,000 rent and a large utility bill and how that works and where that- where that goes. Um, and- and believe me, this is not about money. This is about the children of Bloomington and their future and doing the very best that we possibly can do. And it's also about being responsible and answering the questions of the taxpayers in terms of how, what, where is the accountability for the success rate? The metrics that will prove, you know, and help give us facts, statistics, not guesses, not ideas, not hopeful talk, but proof of what we're really accomplishing out there for the children of Bloomington. So I do thank everyone for their efforts. I'm just- I'm just awestruck by what people have put into this. But I, for myself, I have to be sure this is fair across the city, and also that one area of the city is not stereotyped in any way, shape or form for being the- the troubled area. I don't think that's fair to the west side. My whole family were westsiders. And I'm a champion of the west side, and I don't want stereotypes out there. I- I don't want stereotypes for any group, for any- any side of town. Um, I want it to be fair across the board for all of our children and all of our neighborhoods, and I thank you again, and I am finished.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I think, uh, Alderman, Alderman Schmidt? Or Jennifer, I forgot. Jennifer, you go ahead and go. Your light's on.
Okay. Well, thank you. I won't- I won't speak long. I just wanna say how excited I am to get the opportunity to vote on this tonight. I think it's a great program. Um, it's by no means a government program. I hear all the time from taxpayers, you know, "Government, do something good." You know, government doesn't do the best work alone, and you can see here, if you take a look at the budget, that our funds are being leveraged. Really, the funds that we're giving would only support about one month of this program. That's how much other money is being leveraged to make this happen. So this is, uh, as long as I've sat up here, we've been talking about public-private partnerships, and I realize we talk about those in all sorts of ways. And this is a really important one. I think maybe one of the most important ones I've seen us participate in, and maybe the most important one, um, or among the most important. So I'm really excited we're up here talking about it tonight, um, and I think our role is to say, "You know what? This absolutely supports the strategic vision of this." I'm so excited. Can you tell? The strategic vision of this city. Um, it supports the strong neighborhoods that we've been talking about. It supports, uh, investing in the future of this community. And so to me, you know, that's our role, is to say, "This supports our strategy for moving this city forward." I am glad that there are professionals and- and individuals that are going to sort through all the details of this program and the mechanics of it, and it sounds like that is well underway, and I know it's hard work that's going to continue for the rest of the summer and- and well beyond that, so thank you for that. And thank you for bringing this program to us and allowing us the opportunity to be a partner with you and, uh, doing the good work that you do every day and, uh, moving Bloomington forward, so thanks very much.
Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you. I don't wanna reiterate anything that's been said, but I do think that we need to remember this is a pilot. If we wait until we can grow the program that we wanna grow, we will never do it. We are already spending this money. We're just spending it in a different way and in a reactive way. And I cannot say thank you enough to the churches, um, particularly the- the west-side churches for coming up with this proposal. I also wanna note that, um, um, I've heard a lot of outpouring of support from the YMCA, from Project Oz, from, um, other youth organizations, and, um, um, also have been very excited to talk with Lonnie Smith at State Farm Insurance regarding their support of this program. They just re- he- he and a group of State Farm, um, people just returned from New Orleans with a reconciliation program there. And he has, um, um, given us the opportunity to bring, um, Cafe Reconcile or reconciliation organization up here to Bloomington to, um, help shape this program, to make sure that, um, we're launching it appropriately and assessing it appropriately and that this first year is a win. And, um, he- he really felt that this was a very, very strong start, and he's seen it work in other communities, and I- I appreciate that partnership as well. Again, part of a- a private-public partnership.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna put Alderman Scott Black online. You were involved in some of this. Any comments you have, anything to add to this?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just that, uh, this is a conversation that, um, I was, uh, humbled to be a part of. Um, this stems from a conversation that we had had in my ward and sharing with Karen's ward, uh, just kind of, uh, to the south of, uh, of me. Um, some of the issues that the west side faces in terms of crime specifically related to juveniles. And, um, for those of you who know me, I'm a very, uh, results-oriented kinda guy. And, you know, we can talk about the- the challenges that we face, but what are we gonna do about them? And, uh, this discussion, um, has led to action, and we have, I'm blown away by how quickly that we've moved on talking about how can we implement some of the ideas we're talking about. I've been involved in many different groups, many different ideas, um, projects that just kinda fall by the wayside, because, you know, we have some great ideas, but the implementation is out there. That's not the case with this organization. We, uh, have some really good minds, um, that are talking about helping our kids to solve a specific targeted problem. And I think we're in a good position to make this happen this summer. I don't think this'll just be a pilot program. I think this'll be a recurring, uh, program throughout, uh, moving forward. But, uh, we have to embrace it at this point, and I'm not just talking about voting for it. I wanna participate in it. I wanna volunteer, because I'm gonna put my time in my community. I think we need to have more people that do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Alderman Lauer, on the way.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm kinda struggling with what to say, because this seems to be obvious to me. Um, there's a- there's a great need. It's been pretty well documented over the past couple of years. Uh, we've all seen in the Pennagraf, uh, reports of issues with juveniles, so, uh, I'm not quite sure. Um, I know we do spend, um, money in different ways. Um, and- and I think for a pilot program, uh, while I understand the need to be, uh, responsible with that money, uh, I also, we also have to be open to the fact that this is something new that needs to be tried. We need to applaud the people who are coming together, because this is a partnership of groups that may not come together traditionally. So we should applaud that, and this is something that can help us build for the future. Um, is there ever certainty in everything that we're going to do? There never is. You know, you can have the best engineers, the best statisticians, but it will still, the best accountants, but it- it may still fail, so there is never, uh, certainty. Uh, but what I see here, I see the synergy and the energy that people have, and that, to me, gives me hope that there's going to be, uh, success in this endeavor. Um, just as an example, this is something that I fully support sister-city funding. You know, we had people who were here who were talking about sister-city funding. Um, how many people are involved in the program? Very few. Um, but I- but I also know, uh, I'm also open to the fact that those kinds of things can have a, um, a benefit to the community. We cannot, you know, count the benefit just in terms of how many people we have involved in the program. So let's just be open to the possibility. Let's give it a try, and- and if it doesn't work, we can come back next year and we'll, maybe we'll try something different.
Alderman Sage?
Just a point of clarification, just so there's not any misunderstanding. This is not a multi-year commitment. This is a one-time, a one-year commitment.
One-time, one summer.
We- we wanna make sure that- that we're not somehow implying that- that there's something longer term than that. This is, it's been suggested a pilot program.
Right.
So any suggestion that it could be something that's gonna happen next year or the year after remains to be seen. We just need to see how this works.
I think that's absolutely the case. In my understanding, when I was at the International City-City Management Association, anything that said pilot meant, that means, Nick, you guys, the heavy burden of proof is on you to show us that this is gonna work. And- and there's no assumption whatsoever that there might be any other money coming whatsoever. The whole idea is you provide seed money. And, uh, absolutely, and I would certainly echo what Alderman Sterns had said. Absolutely, the public account, you know, accountability is essential, and that's why we may wind up having, assuming this passes, uh, an- an additional, uh, motion to perhaps delegate authority to the city manager or whatever, you know, the council's pleasure, to ensure that this is implemented over the course of the summer in an agreement that's consistent with our others' points. But I would have to say, in the broader scheme of things, that, uh, if you would've told me that at my second council meeting that we would be able to make so much of a difference in so many human beings' lives, uh, I would've said, "I can't imagine things could happen that quickly." But it- it happened quickly, frankly, not because of government, but because of, uh, an organic process from the community. Yes, Alderman Schmidt and I were involved, and Alderman Black, and then toward the end, city manager, David Hales. But to a large degree, this came from the community, and that's certainly strength. I'm so sorry, Alderman Lauer. I didn't mean to try to give, um, mayoral comments unless the debate was finished. My apologies.
No problem, sir. I appreciate your candor. Um, just a couple quick comments and questions. Um, I understand that this is a very emotional thing, um, and I want you to know that, um, I actually have a family that's been involved in law enforcement and, uh, and social work for many, many years. I grew up, um, with parents that were involved and a grandparent that was involved, uh, prior to the depression, actually. So, um, I understand all the issues that are involved. Um, certainly understand the churches, and I- I commend the entire community that's been involved. Um, however, I think we still need to take a- a very, very close look at what we're doing, where we're spending our money, and how it's being spent from a business standpoint, okay? And we need- we need to have metrics. We need to be able to evaluate where we're going and what we're gonna do next, okay? It's just the way a private, uh, business would run on a- on a, uh, day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month basis. Um, and- and so one of the questions that I would have is, what has been done and what is being done on an ongoing basis, moving on towards the beginning of the program and throughout the program to raise additional funding? And who- who have we approached and- and can we do more on the private sector, from the private sector?
Uh, I- I think we definitely could do more. Um, I think once we had, uh, we, to your point, we have not done much legwork at all to raise, uh, outside dollars other than, um, State Farm and Bloomington. But to us, um, that simply means, to me, actually, what that means is, uh, organizing our pastors, organizing the volunteers at this program, and beginning to put together some type of resource development plan for the program. If they continue to see a need for this, and since they do feel like this is going to be a need, uh, for a long-term, uh, basis in the community, then my suggestion would be to all of the people that they create to be on a- on a board of directors for this program, that they would definitely put together a resource development plan in which I would be able to help them put together, which may include or may not include individual solicitations, special events, and, you know, and different things like that to raise dollars. All of that work, I would definitely not be looking to do so much of that in the beginning just for the sole fact that we do not know if we are even going to be here doing this type of thing starting in June. I would feel more secure being able to have a product in front of me working on and then be able to go out and generate some interest to donate towards it or invest in it, and that's kind of the way I would work instead of putting the car before the horse. But again, I don't know it all, and if the pastors behind me wanted to change that and asked me tomorrow to go out, then we would obviously do that tomorrow, so I would be going along the lines of what their best interest would be.
I'm going to stand here and ask for you to go out and start to do that fundraising now, okay? I think in the best interest of the taxpayer, we have to. I think there's funds available from the private sector, I think they'll get behind us. I think the community is very behind everything that this stands for, it's a very good thing. But, you know, from speaking as a private individual and a person that's spent my lifetime in business and actually watching the revenue almost hour to hour at times, whether we're going to stay afloat in a private business or not, is an ongoing thing that many of our citizens have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. And so I think this type of program needs to be mindful of that as well. I think there's funding available in the private sector, and I think somebody should be assigned to get out there and make those phone calls. I've seen funding for some of these types of programs happen overnight, just with a few phone calls, and you may be able to score 50% of that, okay, in a very, very short period of time. And so I would encourage you to do that, and one of the things I would ask of council is if we could do something on an incremental-type basis, maybe on a week-to-week or a month-to-month basis, so that we're not funding this from our aspect right up front with the $21,000.
Well, I think that's what the discussion that I had with the city manager, Hales, was that if we delegate the authority to the city manager to implement this, there's not a check for $21,000. It's implemented over several months, right?
In other words, what I would like to see, though, is if there's enough private funding that comes in over that period of time that we can dwindle the amount that the taxpayer is actually exposed to, that would be much more palatable to many of my constituents.
Other, any other questions, council? Alderman Sterns.
Sorry, I've already overused my time, I apologize, but I do need to ask because it hasn't come up. I just need to understand about the rent payment and the utility payment because it's listed in the expenses and so on, and I'm just really confused about, you know, who is the rent actually going to and what are the utilities? How are the utilities being, you know, charged?
Just to clarify, I think, if I could clarify, you're talking, Alderman Sterns, about the in-kind, the in-kind contribution, so, right. So it's not the money that the taxpayers' money aren't going for it, right?
I'm talking about the chart that says Church Summer Program Budget, and it says occupancy rent $3,000, $1,000 in June, then it says utilities.
I'm just saying that that's not the amount, that's not the amount that the taxpayers are going to pay for.
No, no, no. Well, I mean, I'm not suggesting that, I'm not, I mean, the taxpayers, taxpayers are putting into the budget.
Right.
That's all. It could go for anything. But my question is, in the budget, and the taxpayers are a part of that budget, what, how, help me with how the rent and how the utilities, what's that, it's listed in here as a monetary figure, and that's what I'd like to understand.
Pastor Rayford, I think, he's standing up, so, again, just to clarify, Alderman Sterns is talking about the amount of in-kind.
That's listed.
That's listed as the total contribution, right?
Total program is going to by far exceed the $21,000. The amount that you see with respect to rent and anything else, those are, as you said, in-kind, and the church I serve is absorbing those costs. That would be rent, utility, air conditioning, whatever else there may be. The $21,000 by and large goes to pay for the mines, and those are going to help shape this program and deal with our kids. The churches here and others, pastors that couldn't be here, are all contributing in kind.
How many, how many other churches were contacted in the city of Bloomington?
Contacted?
Contacted. How many letters went out to all the other churches? How many calls went out to all the other ministers?
That was not that type of a program.
Okay.
We came together around another issue, and this evolved. I'm telling you, unapologetically.
Thank you.
This is bigger than our humanity, this is really a God thing, where His hand is all the way in it, and I know you don't want to hear that, I'm okay with that, but He's working it out so that we are coming together to do something that we cannot, this council or these pastors and these churches cannot do by themselves. And so He's going to make us work together like kids on a playground that don't want to play well together.
Well, thank you.
We want to, but I'm telling you, God is up to something in here.
I think, yeah, I think the big picture is the churches are contributing, the in-kind, the facilities, et cetera, and we're talking about mainly personnel costs.
Thank you.
Any other points, clarification? Okay, do I have a? Well, since we've suspended the rules, Willie, if you make it quick, because this is supposed to take 20 minutes, believe it or not.
I'm Willie Brown, and I live at 3208 Dorset here in Bloomington, and I just want to make a comment about individual giving and private giving. I have already committed to this program to make a contribution because I believe that if you're going to give tax money, taxpayer money, and you think a program is viable and it should be supported, then you should be willing to dig in your own pocket and make a contribution too. So I made the contribution realizing that it's a pilot, but I also made it with the understanding that in order for these folks to come to the city council and say, "Help us out with $21,000," you needed to have support, they needed support from the community that maybe helped the most. This program should be open to everybody, everybody, but if we're talking about what's going on on the West Side, I want to be clear, it should be open to everybody, then people who either grew up on the West Side or were part of the West Side should be willing to put their money where their mouth is too. So they are trying to get money from individuals and from other people, however, it came together so quickly that that part of it was lacking as far as contact.
You see, that, this is, it's consistent with Bloomington's image according to some. We're not supposed to be that decisive and quick, but we're going to be tonight, I have the feeling. Okay, thank you very much. If there aren't any other questions, can we go ahead and, oh, we don't have a motion, actually, formally.
First of all, I'd like to make a motion that we come, that we come back to order.
Oh, thank you. Second, by Alderman McDade, do we need to call the roll for that?
No.
No. Alderman favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're back to order, now we could entertain a motion to approve this?
I would like to make a motion that we approve this expenditure for the West Side Churches program.
Made by Alderman, Alderwoman Schmidt, second by Alderman Black. Okay, all right. Any other questions? Can we go ahead and call the roll? Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, I thought there would be discussion on the motion, so before we call the roll, I have a little discussion.
Oh, okay, I thought we beat the dead horse.
And my discussion is, my discussion is this, the one issue that hasn't come up tonight, and I've heard a great deal about, the Reverend from the Jesus House said we're going to promote God, and some of the, you know, pastor, one of the pastors, I apologize, not knowing the names, talked about how we are going to, you know, we are involving God and God is involved in all this. And I just want to say, and this is a private comment, that as a Christian, I 100% love that. As an alderman and an elected official, it concerns me greatly with the, with the, any use at all of taxpayer money for private, and if you will, religious, religious even related. So I love it as a Christian, and I want to be the one, along with Alderman Black, I want to say that I'd love to make a private contribution from my own company. And along with Alderman Lauer, I'd like to say that I believe this doesn't even come close to the amount of money that you need and could get if, as Mr. Sanchez said, that legwork hasn't been done, that legwork were done. I think the community would jump into this, I think private companies across this town, private individuals would jump into this, and I'm really sad that that hasn't been tried because I think it should be, and I think that's the way this program should be funded. And because of that connection, again, as an alderman, as an elected person, I think the city cannot responsibly use taxpayer money, not even community development, which is still taxpayer, but it's a grant. This program, with all apologies, would not meet grant requirements, you know, when grants are written, they have to meet certain criteria, metrics are critical. I had a long chat with the Illinois Policy Institute today, who gave me a list of metrics that would be required for any grant by most state or funded agencies. So I really apologize, I love the program, I love the idea, I'd love to help, but I can't support this, I don't think that's the responsible thing to the taxpayers of Bloomington, across religious faiths, even atheism, whatever they are, I can't support that concept, but I do applaud you and I wish you all the success in the world. Thank you.
Okay. I second that as well, I back Judy up. I really think that we have to be very cognizant of what we're spending public funds for. If you had a plan for going forward and raising those funds on your own, I would probably get a little bit more behind this, but at the current time, since there is not a plan, you admitted that, I really can't support it publicly. I want to see a plan to make your program go forward, but you should have, you know, any responsible program would have somebody highlighted and a group of folks answering to him or her to make that funding available and to make those phone calls. I've seen things happen in the private sector that you wouldn't believe at times, and I think that that could happen and should happen here. I would like the city to stand behind this, you know, from a standpoint that we would support you, but not necessarily financially, until at least we have a plan for that funding and those private donations, et cetera. So that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, all right. Alderman Frue, if you'd be rather quick, we haven't heard from you, otherwise I would go ahead to the call to the question here.
And with all respect, Mr. Mayor, I've not spoken in the last 60 minutes.
I know.
So I will make this very quick, I almost feel like I'm obligated to say something, and I want to say that I'm fully supportive of this, and there's uncertainties in a lot of things we do, and we talked about being a pilot, so I'm making some reputation here, but there's a lot of unanswered questions, and for $21,000, it seems like a very good investment to me. And I guess I'd like to make some additional comments in the alderman's discussion, but so that we don't delay this any further than the 60 minutes we've spent, then I suspect, I suggest we proceed with the vote.
Thank you, Alderman Frue. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? And again, a yes would be in favor, obviously, and a nay would be opposed.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Frue?
Yes.
Alderman Lauer?
No.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Mollamway?
Yes.
Alderman Stern?
No.
Alderman McDay?
Yes.
Okay, 62, motion carries. And could we, in terms of administrative matters, could we have, entertain a motion to delegate authority to the city manager to execute this consistent with our other types of contracts?
Some of.
Moved by Alderman McDade, second.
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Okay, any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Frue?
Yes.
Alderman Lauer?
Yes.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Mollamway?
Yes.
Alderman Stern?
Aye.
Alderman McDay?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We'll move on then to item 7B, text amendment to chapter eight, animals and fowls, identification and regulation of vicious and dangerous dogs. Now here we recommend that the ordinance be passed, and we have budgeted 15 minutes, but I understand that there might be another request for a motion to suspend the rules?
Well, it's either a motion to suspend the rules because we have someone here from Wishbone or a motion to table because we have not had enough time, and we talked about this at our last meeting, that we might not have enough time to fully reach. So frankly, I'd like to make that motion, I'd like to just make the motion that we table because we talked last time about Wishbone, and frankly, we got a written statement from Wishbone here regarding the many, many, you know, problems, issues that remain with the, with coordinating with all, not just Wishbone, but McLean County.
Just if I can, if we can just get the, is it a motion, I'll let you speak in just a second, is it a motion to table to a time certain, to the next meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is there a second to that? Yes. Second by Alderman Lauer. Again, Alderwoman Sterns, if you could speak to your motion and why.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
The motion, you mean, to table until a time certain, which would be the next council meeting in order to allow Wishbone, whose attorney is out of town, I understand, and who also, we have not, you know, we talked last time about making sure we have enough time to coordinate with them and with the Humane Society to make sure that we don't, and frankly, if I can, if it's the proper time to say this, I'm not sure it is, that we don't in any way hamper their fostering program or that we don't, you know, simply fail to completely coordinate their wonderful efforts with, you know, stray dogs and such.
Just as a background, there had, Alderman Lauer and Alderwoman Sterns and I did meet with Wishbone and Representatives of Humane Society a week ago this evening, and our legal counsel, George Boyle, was there, and I know that there's been some interaction, that's just as background information. Alderman Frue, you wanted to comment?
My only comment at this time is that if that motion that's on the table would fail, I'd like to submit another motion if it fails.
Thank you, Alderman Frue. Alderwoman Schmidt?
I am wondering, since we're working our way through a new council committee structure, whether it's more appropriate for us to go back to the committee of which Alderman Sterns is also a part, and Alderman Sage chairs, and we get to revisit with Wishbone, Humane Society, and whatever, and rework this so that we're not, in many ways, maybe this is paralleling what we like to have happen with boards and commissions.
Okay, if I might, if, I'm understanding the procedural situation here, would you be willing to, and then the second, or withdraw your motion?
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion and?
And so that we can, so we can then make a motion to refer it to the?
And make the motion, can I make the motion that we refer it?
As long as you're in agreement and then we have the second, or, okay, then you?
Make the motion that we refer it back to the Public Safety Committee, this ordinance.
Second, a second motion. Okay, second motion. Further discussion, Alderman?
Discussion, very quickly, I'm not a big fan of suspending the rules, but I'm always concerned when we have people come to a meeting, they've spent their time, this was published, there ought to be some allowance tonight for those that are here and with your time management, Mayor, to give people time to comment, not to repeat what was discussed two weeks ago, but some brief period of time, that'd be my suggestion.
Thank you very much, an excellent suggestion, Alderman Frue, an excellent suggestion. And before we go to comments, I think Alderman Sage and then Alderman Black.
So I guess I need to ask a question, was there some assumption that we would have public comment on this tonight?
Well, it would still have required a suspension of the rules.
Sure, I understand.
Well, there are people who are in the audience who are here precisely because of this, right? So it is not consistent with our rules, right, because this is the second council meeting to make comments beforehand, so we would have to suspend the rules.
And I will leave it up to the discretion of the chair, I'd like to see minimal time allocated for public comment tonight. Our next Public Safety Committing Meeting is June 13th, that means this would automatically go then to the second council meeting in June, which should be more than enough time when we come back for the second meeting in June, which I think is the 24th, we should be ready to vote that night. That's almost, that's practically a month away.
Correct. I think if I'm not mistaken, if I'm stating Alderman Frue's comments correctly, is that there were people who, there are people who've come this evening, and in the interests of openness, to give them some time, but you're suggesting perhaps because there'll be further comments, that we, maybe five minutes?
Yeah, and I agree, as long as we then likewise encourage and reinforce coming back through the Alderman Subcommittee.
Correct.
You know, whether it's public safety or infrastructure or whatever else it might be, that's the process that we're trying to follow. So five minutes is certainly worthwhile.
Sounds like a plan, but I believe, Alderman Black, you wanted to comment first?
Just really quickly, I've gotten some feedback from constituents about this topic, and I'm open to the idea of postponing, but I'd like to go back to them with a specific reason as to the virtue of postponing, so I guess that would be directed to who made the motion, Alderwoman Sterns.
Alderwoman Sterns, of course.
Thank you. And the reason is because of Wishbone Rescue Group, which came to Kevin and sort of to me, as did McLean County Humane Society. And they wanted to coordinate to make sure that the rules in our vicious dog ordinance didn't in any way hamper their fostering, because they have a very extensive foster program, and they save. because they have a very extensive foster program. They save, they save 600 stray animals per year, roughly. I think that was their number last year. So, they're clearly heavily invested in animal welfare in our community, and they have these concerns, sort of legal language to make sure that their fosters didn't feel, you know, any sense of trepidation because of this ordinance. And I'm sure that we would agree, we don't want to in any way, you know, hamper their wonderful efforts with stray animals. And McLean County Humane Society was also involved. So, I think we've got, you know, some very, some great people asking, and I think that, to me, it's, you know, it's kind of a, certainly, it's a, it's a good thing, and something we want to make sure we partner with. So, that's why I'm asking again, but I do agree about taking it to committee.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right. And before we actually vote then on the motion, well, let's see, do we need to vote on the motion first?
Yeah, we do.
Yes, okay, we need to vote on the motion. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? And this is to refer this back to committee?
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Frue?
Yes.
Alderman Lauer?
Yes.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Milamway?
Yes.
Alderman Sterns?
Aye.
Alderman McDade?
Yes.
Okay. And at this point, before we move on to city manager and other discussion, I would like, could I have a motion to suspend the rules, and we would allocate five minutes to Wishbone?
Some moved.
Moved by Alderman Black, second by Alderman Frue. Excuse me.
Mayor, the Assistant Carpet Council would like to address counsel.
First of all, with regard to the motion, I'd ask that it be expanded to include people who have come to address the insurance component that there's been some expression of interest in. Kerry Barr, who's here, is an attorney with extensive experience in insurance law, and he attended at the invitation of staff in order to address those concerns. So, rather than just hearing from people, actually, Wishbone is largely, at least half of their concerns have been met and incorporated into the new ordinance, but whether, you know, rather than just hearing from one point of view, we'd ask that there be a limited time, at least so that the insurance concerns can be briefly discussed by someone we've invited to be here, because we are of a belief that it was going to be addressed tonight.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. My motion was intended to incorporate anybody who wished to speak on the topic.
With a total of five minutes?
You said the rules, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, you've just spent, okay, and Alderman Frue, would you concur with that? You were the second of the motion.
The question is, can this be done in five minutes adequately?
Well, what we can do, I have some people in the audience who are saying that it's fine. Okay, well, we'll attempt to be, five minutes with a little bit of flexibility, but not too much. Okay, thank you. Will you call the roll, please? Thank you. Sorry, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Frue?
Yes.
Alderman Lauer?
Yes.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Milamway?
Yes.
Alderman Sterns?
Aye.
Alderman McDade?
No.
Okay. Wonder if, well, we've got three minutes. We're not set up for five yet. If we could come for, who were the representatives from Wishbone, or the attorneys that were supposed to speak?
I'm a representative of Wishbone.
And George, you said we had a representative here to talk about the insurance issues?
I'm a representative there.
Okay.
I think we have five minutes. I'll yield to everybody else.
Oh, okay.
Did you already have my report?
Correct. Okay. The gentleman who was coming here to talk about the insurance, and then another representative of Wishbone?
No, I'm the contract veterinarian for McLean County Animal Control.
Okay, well, I think in this particular situation, the intent, if I'm not, if I don't misunderstand Alderman Frue's comment and concern to suspend the rules, was to let people who came here who are on the side, you know, concerned about this particular ordinance, to express their concerns.
I am concerned about the ordinance.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, come on forward, sir, and then make, tell you what, I'll allocate two minutes, and then we'll allocate three minutes to the gentleman behind you.
I am Gary Pearl, county veterinarian.
Okay, you name an address, too?
My address is 16551 Old Colonial Road, 61705.
Please.
No, my concern, or my, I guess my request, is that all parties, if this goes to committee, I would like to request that all parties that have interest and concerns regarding this, that they be offered the opportunity to speak and give their perceptions. I do understand that the people that held conference last week, that animal control was not a part of that discussion. So, that's my request.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Hello, counsel. My name is Kerry Barr. Address is 812 East Elm Street in Bloomington. My experience in the insurance end of it has been at the claim side of it, and I've been in, doing that for about 30 years here in town for several different insurance carriers. I think that this situation needs more time than the two or three minutes that I could do any justice to the topic right now. What I'd be willing to do is meet with the committee at any time and spend as much time as they want, but I was requested to talk about the issue of, is this insurance available? And if it's available, what would it cost? So, I could be happy to talk to the committee if they would contact me. I'll talk to George, give him my phone and address. Well, he already has that. Be happy to attend. That's all I have to say now.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Please step forward and state your name. Thanks.
Christina Bicknell-Marlet, 1112 North Mason Street, Bloomington.
I think I slightly interrupted you. Could you repeat your name? I'm sorry.
Christina Bicknell-Marlet.
Okay.
Okay, I am the owner of two vicious dogs that have been deemed for the Bloomington Normal. I want to know if those rules change, if this goes to vote for the rules that I already have to abide by. Does it change, or am I already going to be grandfathered under the old balls with you guys?
Well, we could, our legal counsel, George Boyle, can you answer that?
Essentially, they're going to change with notice.
Okay.
I don't follow.
It's their benefit to our government. They have to talk by any reasonable case at the end.
Right, right. Okay. And you...
They won't be, they won't stay the same regardless of the ordinance. They will change.
Right.
So, how would that benefit me when I have to pay a fine to the county yearly? My dogs have to be kennelled the rest of their life?
Well, I think, ma'am, these are the specific things I think we're going to, we need to deal with in the committee, and we're going to need to deal with in the next, or two council meetings from now, when we actually handle this. Because, I mean, we could go with a specific case or specific situation, and I don't think that's appropriate right now for a city council business meeting, to go for specific issues that you might have with specific dogs.
I just want to know if I'm going to be grandfathered on, and when it's been a two, it's been two years.
Well, I think that question has been answered by our legal counsel. It will be, it will change with notice, if this goes into effect. Okay?
I mean, I lost my home. One of my dogs have been put to sleep. I've been run through the wringer by the city and by everybody.
Again, ma'am, I don't know the details of your situation, but...
No, because you guys wouldn't listen to me when I came to you.
Well, you can certainly speak next time. You can come to the mayoral open house. I have them every Friday before every city council meeting, and from 4:00 to 5:30, you're welcome to come, and we can talk to it. I'll talk to you in more detail about that and follow up. Okay? Thank you. Right. Now, we move back to, where are we, in terms of our vote? I'm sorry.
We need a motion to return to order.
We need a motion to return. Thank you. Some moved. Moved by Member Sage, Alderman Sage, second by Alderman Frue. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So, we're back into session.
Mayor, just to reiterate, we do have the next Public Safety Committee meeting is June 13th, 5 o'clock here in the city council chamber. So, folks from the humanitarian groups, the insurance group, the county veterinarian, should not be any misunderstanding as to when that time will be available to come and bring public comment to the committee that we can then bring back to the council.
Correct. June 13th?
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock, correct.
And we'd be pleased to devote the whole hour to that if that's needed.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And also, then, the next mayoral open house would be, what would the date on that be? The 14th of the day after. So, there'll be the 13th and then the 14th prior to the June 17th, I guess would be city council meeting. Do I have the dates right?
No.
No? The 10th? Oh, so it's even sooner than that. June 7th, June 7th, from 4:00 to 5:30, right here in the council chambers. Okay, thank you. And so, we still need to vote then on recommitting this, or we did, we already voted to recommit? We did. Okay. Thank you. City managers, discussion. And welcome back, by the way, David. I was...
Thank you.
Pleased to see you this morning when I came in.
Yeah, it's good to be back. I did want to just make reference to one of the documents we attached to the council. Questions, comments, staff response, is a document, that it was my recollection, we sent to the council, I think it was maybe last year. What you have attached to that is a document that says park signage by developers' status report. This particular report, which was prepared by John Kennedy, did grow out of, I think, what was some of the questions we had, and that was, what have, what are developers doing today to put signage on undeveloped land that either by annexation agreement or some other means been targeted for a future park site? And this report was really to help the council understand what are those undeveloped tracts of land around the city? How did we either acquire them, or will acquire them? What's the basis for those agreements? But then also to give you some idea of the type of signage. At this point in time, that's as far as we have taken the particular issue of trying to change how developers refer to future park sites. You know, some of the questions I saw the council members, Alderman raise, was, how do we kind of inform these developers that there's no likelihood in the near future that there could be a park site approved for funding? On the other hand, we've got to keep in mind that this council cannot bind future councils as to when they might appropriate money for future park sites. And some of these particular tracts do go back to annexation agreements, so on and so forth. I think we'd all agree that, I think one of the problems in the past is that sometimes realtors, developers, or others have sometimes given incorrect information as to when to expect a undeveloped tract of land to be developed. There is, tonight, I'm not here to kind of provide to you any kind of so-called implementation plan of how we can address that problem going forward. I do want to bring this to your attention and ask, if you could, please email you, email to me any particular questions, thoughts you might have going forward. I have spoken to our legal counsel, and we're going to just address this issue. What can we do, even with some of these existing properties? And as you'll see, some of them, developers have put up signage. Sometimes all they say is, you know, future park site, period. So, if you could, review that document. If you could email me with any questions you'd like to see us address in maybe a second phase of that report, and that is, what can we do? What are some of the options? What can't we do, you know, et cetera, before we maybe address that again in one of the Aldermanic committees? And I think that'd maybe be the appropriate forum to discuss this further of, what's the next step, if anything, to try and change, you know, that sometimes incorrect communications that's going on, giving property owners unrealistic expectations when they may see a particular undeveloped tract of land developed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Given the hour, I will be very brief, just as some updates. We did have the, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, our second mayoral open house this past Friday, and we had about 15 people, not quite as many as the first time around, but we had a pretty robust discussion. Almost none of it had to do with the items that we were dealing with this evening, but that was okay, because we got to ask lots of different questions. I learned a fair lot, too. A gentleman came in with grass in his hand, and he made it quite clear that there, that his neighbor had not mowed his grass in quite some time, and Barb Atkins, thank goodness she was there, because she knew exactly what was going to happen and when. And I think he was at least, he knew we were responsive, and that happened. So, we had wide-ranging discussions, and I certainly invite you all to join us from 4:00 to 5:30. Any, the next time will be June 7. I was just corrected. I think I was getting my Mondays wrong, and I'm backdating to Friday. I do have some, some interns working on trying to examine transparency ordinances throughout the state and in other communities, and perhaps what might be useful for us here, might be feasible for us. We are making some progress on declassifying minutes, and so we, again, want to make sure that we, as much as possible, make it clear that this is your city hall, and, you know, you should have access to us and your documents, and know what's going on. Beyond that, we are making some progress in, perhaps at some point in the summer, perhaps early summer, bringing a downtown revitalization plan to the council, minus the things that are perhaps the most controversial. We are continuing discussions about some improvements in capital projects and infrastructure, including the Bun Street extension, Hamilton Road extension, and some of the Fox Creek extension. So, there's Fox Creek Bridge. So, there are many things that we're moving on. I've had, continued to have a variety of conversations with our Alderman and the Public Finance Committee, and Rob Fazini as well, who knows finance better than I, and Deputy City Manager Barb Atkins, and David Hales, on our pensions, and having a budget model that funds pensions first. And again, this is a kind of a midterm thing. It'll be a few months down the line, but we will have a program to adequately fund our pensions. And beyond that, I am meeting next week with Alderman Sage and Alderman Schmidt, who've done considerable work on helping to give good data and information on our board and commissions, and vacancies, and expired terms, and we're going to have a wide-ranging discussion about what we can do to help improve that as we go forward. And they've done great work, and I look forward to that meeting next week. Those are some of the latest. I will be quiet and turn it over to Alderman. And I know Alderman Frue. Again, my apologies earlier, our discussion had just gone on, and you hadn't said anything, and so I apologize for suggesting that you be brief when you hadn't uttered a peep. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me just change gears a little bit, and hitchhike a little bit on David's comment with regard to the developers and so forth. I think during our campaign season, we realized that many of us met with the Bloomington Normal Association Realtors. Many of us know they have a very active government affairs committee.
Tell me about it.
Locally, state, and federal. And I think my idea, my suggestion would be for yourself as a mayor or as a manager, to meet with the Bloomington Normal Association Realtors, kind of express this conversation about implications, et cetera. And I think, from what I have seen, it's very feasible that they could send out a message to every realtor in town, just kind of a precautionary thing to say, let's be careful in what we communicate, what we say, and make sure we're not providing any false hopes to people. So, I think there is a forum there. It can be accomplished. I'd volunteer, but I think it's best done by either the mayor or the manager.
I did speak to them on Thursday morning, and I promised to come back regularly, so this is an opportunity, maybe David and I can go back, and you can come, too. It doesn't involve, it'll be a meeting time. They meet at 8 o'clock in the morning, though, if that's right.
And I think the other thing, too, is it's not just the real estate profession. There's a lot of people out there that are talking about what's going to happen to certain land and parcels, and so it's more than real estate. It's banks, and it's et cetera, et cetera. So, that was that comment. I think my other comment with regard to suspension of rules, I think we all kind of were caught off guard tonight a little bit by the amount of time that was allowed. I am very respectful of the time we did provide. I supported it. I voted for it. I suspect that if we had taken that vote 60 minutes earlier, it might have been a similar... I suspect that if we had taken that vote 60 minutes earlier, it might have been a similar vote. So I'm not trying to discourage public input, I'm just suggesting that when we are the first hearing body, it's not done in committee, it's not done in a planning commission or so forth, then we're going to have to accept, you know, some time. And I know we're trying to shorten our meetings. We've made a lot of progress, but if we're the first hearing body, we have to realize that time will be added to the night's agenda, so thank you.
If I might just, one of the reasons why I felt like we needed to discuss this is because it went very quickly. Had I known it was going to come up, I would have made comments in the mayoral remarks two weeks ago. I wasn't quite sure that it was going to come up. It wasn't until the next night after that. So that's one of the reasons why, if I aired tonight, it was trying to be on the side of letting as many questions come out and letting participants talk with no real time limits. Right? So again, again, if I aired in the future, I will only air on that side if this is the first time something's coming to us. Alderman Sage? That's okay. We just come around this horn, that's fine. You were the only one, oh, I'm so sorry. Wow, I glanced over there. Alder Woman McDade?
Oh, thank you. Real quick, I have two, I think, just maybe process-type things. One is on the suspension of the rules regarding the dog ordinance. I guess I'm, while I'm concerned with when people come to a meeting thinking that we're going to discuss something, I'm more concerned with us discussing something at a meeting knowing there'll be a future opportunity at a committee meeting, and people, you know, people are here, maybe not all the Aldermen hear it, or they think they were heard, so then they don't come to the committee meeting. I just think we have an issue. We need to let people know, okay, this is when we're going to have the time set aside for everyone to come and speak on something. And I thought, when we were going down the committee road, you know, one of the things we had talked about before is sometimes we have these issues that really do warrant a public hearing, and that's not always best done in the middle of a council meeting that's gone on, you know, at this point in the evening. And so the committee provides an opportunity to say, boy, this sure looks like it's going to get some interest publicly. Let's go ahead and open up at least one or maybe two slots at the committee time, or, you know, when people are getting off work, and advertise them as such and so on. And so I'm not saying that that has to be the case in the, for the dog ordinance, although it does seem to be getting more interest, and it had even more interest tonight than it had a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, I'm just saying, we might want to think proactively and put aside those hearing times, if it's at the committee, if that's, you know, committee level or some other time, and then that way, that's the designated time, and I think it just gets a little bit unclear when we try to do it on the fly, although I know we have good intentions. We want people to have their voices heard. The second part on the process, too, was just with regard to our discussion on the earlier item, you know, I'm just sensitive to the fact that, you know, we have a, we have a large amount of time, we have several people that want to speak, everyone's trying to really gauge themselves. I wish we all had a set amount of time. And I've said this before, and I'll just say it publicly, if it's a minute, it's a minute, if it's three, it's three, if it's 25, it's 25, whatever. I'll prepare my remarks, I'll prepare the, you know, what I have to share, if I have anything to share, for the set amount of time that I'm given, but then that way, at least everyone that needs the opportunity to speak has it for that set amount of time. That could extend to the public as well, so that when they come to address us, they can prepare themselves for that set amount of time. That would just be, you know, something we could aspire to. Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Fruin.
Thanks. We certainly suspended the rules tonight, something that I've always been a fan of, allowing our citizens to speak. And I certainly hope that now we'll let others speak who come to speak, because I think, I agree with everyone who said they take in their time. On the time issue, you know, we're performing a specific function up here, and I don't think that it's proper for elected officials attempting to vote properly necessarily be constricted. I apologize if I talked too long tonight, I am sorry. But I do think that the 7A, I had to chuckle a little bit at a comment I heard that, gee, there's not much on the agenda. I think 7A is really a very groundbreaking ordinance. I think it cuts to the chase of every single thing we do. I think it definitely talks about church and state. Of all the nonprofits we support, I don't think we've ever been approached by a nonprofit that is, you know, openly talking about their faith and how they're going to use their faith in the program. And I think it's critically, critically important. We're sworn to do one thing, and that is to defend the Constitution. And I think this, I think this is an issue that every citizen in this town should think about. It has nothing to do with $21,000. It has nothing to do with the merit of the program. I think if this were a different faith, I think if it were a completely different scenario, I think we would have an entirely different, different situation. And I think fairness to every citizen, every faith, every ethnic group in this city is absolutely part of our mission, and I'm really, really concerned about the verbiage in this tonight, about the selection process, about the metrics. It's groundbreaking for us. I've never seen anything like this in my six years, anything even close. So I'm very concerned. And I'm really surprised that we're not looking at this as a church and state issue, because that's exactly one of the major issues that I see in this. Thank you.
Alderman Millamway.
Actually, he was first.
Oh, go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I had something rather simple, but I wanted to say that Alderman Fruin stole my thunder earlier about taxes, because that was a comment that I wanted to make. But in looking at the assessors' report, there is actually a pretty good story to be told, and I'm reminded of it when I opened up my own tax bill and realized that the aggregate of all the levy decreases is actually pretty sizable. So I, you know, whoever's listening, David, maybe that would be a good story to, you know, to discuss. All right. Thank you.
Two quick items, and probably more operational in nature, because, and again, this is just our second meeting with you as mayor. In regards to suspension of the rules, I think as a council, we spent a fair amount of time talking about that last year. That's a settled issue, as far as I'm concerned. Now, if we want to vote again as a council, we can do that. I wouldn't anticipate there's majority support to undo kind of the process and procedures we've put into place when we revamped our meetings last year. But if there is, certainly if the majority support is there, we need to revisit that. As far as I'm concerned, that's a settled issue. And then, secondly, and again, it's a little bit of a change in how you facilitate the meetings, Mayor, and that is, I think it's real important that we remember to use our microphones when we're speaking. I know I've sat up here for the last six years having my microphone turned on for me, and so it's different to have to, you know, operate my own microphone. But I think for purposes of clarity, of understanding, of comments and votes for people in a large room, as well as the recording of our votes, people need to make sure their microphones are turned on, and we can just help remind each other to do that going forward. And again, it's just something new. It's a different way with the way our meetings are working. Actually, when Scott Sprouls was, he walked me through both of the forms of this, and I said, there's that form, or there's laissez-faire? I'm for laissez-faire. So that was just my choice on that. Well, yeah, no, no, and I like the approach. I mean, I think, I mean, we're adults, we can certainly be accountable for our microphone use. I'm just saying, for purposes of comment and voting, we need to make sure that our microphones are on. Absolutely. And I've been guilty of that, too. Actually, mostly, I think, Tracy, you've had to turn it off for me, because I leave it on. Alderman.
Yield my time.
Pardon me?
Going to yield my time.
Okay.
Did I mismatch out, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Sorry. I just wanted to respond to Alderman Sterns. I have him part of these conversations. One of the things that I'm a big proponent of is the separation of church and state. And we first started having these discussions, I expressed some of the concerns that you expressed. And as the program developed, as the discussion moved forward, the intent wasn't so much of missionary work as it was of teaching at-risk youth trade skills that will be marketable in the real world. And that's what won my support. I couldn't put head to pillow with the idea of using taxpayer dollars to fund a missionary-type program. However, in this case, looking at the details in the program as they've been flushed out, it's not a, you know, spending time with, you know, discussing religion, Bible study, any of that. It's about teaching kids, getting them off the street, giving them a skill that they can use that will make them productive members of society moving forward.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And we really, you know, in terms of, we could go a long way, whether you agree with or disagree, but the Bush Justice Department in 2003, I believe it was, had a pretty clear, broad decision on church and state. You can, you can do a lot of things that frankly would really concern me, as long as you have secular purposes. But anyway, but that is an issue, so I think at this point, do we have any, one last point?
But that's not what they said tonight. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but they made a major point of tonight.
No, no, I'm saying, you could, well, I'm not going to go down this path too far.
They talked about God.
But we could actually have a ministry that is subsidized by tax dollars, and it still is okay. And that's-
Even if it's a ministry?
As long as there's secular purposes involved in it.
Okay.
So it's a pretty broad, I didn't, I don't, I'm not saying it's a good rule, but we could have gone way, we could have gone much, much further down the faith-based initiatives. In fact, this isn't really a faith-based initiative, but it's got some religious overtones. We could have gone much further on that continuum and still been okay constitutionally.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what I'm just saying. Anyway, anything else? I didn't have my glasses, and I think at this point, all we really need to have is a motion to adjourn. So I have a motion to adjourn?